What's that?
The council chamber.
Oh, yeah.
They had to go ahead and lay this down.
Mm-hmm.
It's like there's no cameras.
That was a chore.
That was a yell. I don't think it was a worry.
That was a chore. I worked for that.
You talked to Joe?
I was working for the city at that time. I used to help.
Not lately.
I was just wondering if you were still.
Yeah, I just would carry all this crap over there. Set up for me.
Mm-hmm.
That was before this, obviously, before this was here.
Sniggy's here. I've worked on this one.
Hello.
Yes.
I snuck in.
Snuck in. So, from I do?
Did you?
Yes, you left the Historical Society.
Well.
Yeah, you know this stuff now.
You want Janice, please.
It's weird.
Two, two, mm-hmm. Meetings are long enough.
Okay.
Nobody's arguing.
We don't give out cupcakes.
I cannot make this thing stop.
Yeah, the camera is not working.
Now I have to get on YouTube. I have to put these things down.
This appears to be, uh, where is that anything?
I don't know. I think that's something like a quarter.
It's not something you want to see.
Yeah. Me again.
Do we have heat yet? Have a heater yet?
There's heat.
Apparently, the summer's going on.
The new ones aren't on yet.
Nah.
I haven't.
Fortunately. It was raining.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, we're on, thank goodness.
Okay.
This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
The leaders stood the flag for the United States of America. A deserved republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Councilmember Bruno? Here. Councilmember DePantholius?
Here.
Councilmember McCary? Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Samuelson, City Solicitor Smith, and City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Uh, does anyone have any communications to offer? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening. Uh, it was my honor, uh, last week to swear in the Summers Point Historical Society at their installation dinner. And congratulations to Kirk Gerty and staff, which met, is made up of Lynn McEwen, Dennis Tapp, Walter Gregory, Jim Foreman, and Mike Cadziora. It just, I may have missed one or two, but it, uh, it was an honor being there. And there were, uh, a few of the council folks here, Mr. McGuigan, Council President, and of course, never forget, Mr. Owen. But it was a great night to be had. The Veterans Advisory Board will be meeting, um, on Wednesday, uh, February eighth at six o'clock PM at the, uh, at the AmVets Building. Uh, this will be the rework, uh, to start out for the year. On February seventh, uh, the grand opening and ribbon cutting will take place at Planet Fitness. So, everyone is invited to attend. It's on February seventh at four o'clock PM. Everybody else is, everybody is definitely welcome to show up to that. And last but not least, um, many of us, uh, the elected officials will be attending the Fire Company Number Two Installation Dinner on Saturday, February fourth. And that's all I have to, uh, report.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Frost?
Good evening. Uh, nothing to report this evening.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes. I'm pleased to announce for Madam, uh, Council President and Councilman McGuigan, uh, with his assistant primary assistant with our engineer. We have ordinance number four on a matrix.
Uh, thank you for that. I'd like to personally thank you for providing the matrix in electronic form so that I can zoom in on it and be able to read it.
Yeah, because that's the only way you can read it.
We'll speak to the engineer about that.
Can't wait to see it in the code book.
His glasses are obviously stronger than mine.
Yeah, well, he's a lot younger.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Uh, last Friday, we had the 2022 Stormwater Repairs Phase Two Preconstruction Meeting with the contractor. They'll be starting at the, um, middle of February on some of the stormwater repairs. That was already ordered by City Council. On the agenda tonight is the Bay Avenue Light Replacement Bid. Uh, that includes replacing the existing lights with LED lights from Gold Avenue to New Jersey Avenue. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions about those bids, but we could, uh, go over those when, uh, the resolution comes. And, uh, lastly, Administrator Frost and I met with Atlantic County Engineering Department last Wednesday to go over the, um, grant the city received for Shore Road, um, to get some feedback from them. There'll be a, uh, in our local agreement coming forward in the next couple of months to, um, to finalize that with the county.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anyone have any committee reports to offer?
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Doe.
I have two, uh, committee reports. The Short Term Rental Committee has met and we're trying to finalize a, uh, an ordinance and turn it over to the Solicitor, uh, for drafting of that ordinance. And we're hoping to have it come before council, either the first or second, uh, council meeting in February. And the second report is the Planning Board has reorganization. Paul Strieveski is the chairman. Brian Cotton is the vice chairman. Joel Fleishman was the, uh, was appointed as the attorney. Kate and Snyder are the engineers and Jane, uh, yeah. Mushka was, uh, appointed the board secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Economic Development also had their meeting on Monday night. Their new, uh, chair is Chuck Westcott. Co-chair is, um, Charles Hor- Habricorn. And, uh, Mary Jane.
What's Mary Jane?
Bolden.
Drawn by.
Bolden is the, um, secretary. Very interesting agenda. I think they have a lot of good goals for this year. And, uh, one of the things they're asked, they're going to ask from us is, uh, to put out an RFP for a marketing company for the city to do, uh, some promotional work. So, we're, they're working on that. Anyone, any other committee reports?
Council President, I wasn't able to attend, um, the Arts Commission, but I spoke with them. And they have a lot of classes coming up that are available for adults and for children, uh, photography, poetry. And they, um, now that they have space, they're able to do more. They're, um, they need more money. They're, um, they're, they only have one thing they do in the year that they charge for, and that isn't very much, but, um, so they're working on all that.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have minutes, right?
No.
No. Okay. Um, ordinance number one.
Ordinance number one and ordinance amending ordinance number five of 2022 and ordinance of the city of Summers Point, County of Atlantic, New Jersey, establishing the rates, fees, rents, and other charges of the city of Summers Point Sewer Utility.
Uh, this is the second reading. Could I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number one. If you wish to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for com- for, uh, public comment. Uh, could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number one?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number one is adopted. Ordinance number two.
Ordinance number two and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-nine of 2015 and ordinance four of two thousand and six and amending and supplementing section five of ordinance five of two thousand and one to adjust the sewer connection fee charges and repealing all ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith.
This is the second reading. May I have a motion to open for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number two.
Um, Patricia Pearson, five eight seven Marks Road, Summers Point. What the, what exactly does this mean?
What are the connection, the ordinance about the connection piece?
Yes.
Or in December two? Yeah, so it relates to the fee that we charge when someone wants to connect to our sewer infrastructure. So, if someone's building a house or a business on a big, big land, it's the rate that we charge them for them to connect to our system.
Okay, so it's strictly about sewer rates, correct?
It's strictly about sewer.
Connection.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
May I have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for a public comment. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number two?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number two is adopted. Ordinance number three.
Ordinance number three of 2023 and ordinance amending and supplementing the Summers Point Municipal Code, Chapter two fifty, vehicles and traffic, and enacting Article nine, Section two fifty dash seventy-three, designated crosswalks, and repealing all ordinances heretofore adopted, the provisions of which are inconsistent herewith.
May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is the first reading for ordinance number three. Uh, ordinance number four.
Ordinance number four of 2023 and ordinance amending and supplementing the Summers Point Municipal Code, Chapter one fourteen, Development Regulations, and enacting Article thirty-two zoning matrix schedule, Section one fourteen dash two three three designated as schedule of minimum area, yard, and building requirements.
This is, uh, the first reading. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? This was a long time coming, so thank you for everybody that worked on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, ordinance number four is adopted.
Introduced, didn't it? Introduced.
Introduced, I'm sorry. Yes. First reading. Okay. Um, could I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on, for resolutions only.
Patricia Pearson, five eight seven Marks. What's this hiring of a part-time employee? What is that?
Uh, Shelby's out on maternity leave. So, it's a part-time employee for the clerk's office.
Okay.
Our deputy clerk is out on, on maternity leave.
Okay, for how long?
Well, that's to be determined.
Six months?
Yeah.
Three months? However long it takes or forever?
We don't really know the answer to that yet. That's up to Shelby, I guess, so.
Okay.
That's a medical question.
All right. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, motion to close?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That was really, really in time.
Hello. Any opposed? All right, we're now closed for public comment on resolutions. Uh, resolution number fifty.
Resolution number fifty of 2023, a resolution approving participation with the state New Jersey Safe and Secure Communities Program administered by the New Jersey Department. Uh-oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Uh, I apologize. Resolution number fifty of 2023, hiring a part-time employee in city clerk's office, namely Allison Giapapa.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifty is approved. Resolution number fifty-one.
Resolution number fifty-one of 2023, appropriation reserve transfer.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Yes.
Councilmember DePantholius?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes.
Uh, resolution number fifty-one is adopted. Resolution number fifty-two.
Resolution number fifty-two of 2023, approving proposals, goods, and services, 2023.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifty-two is adopted. Resolution number fifty-three.
Resolution number fifty-three of 2023, awarding bid for Bay Avenue Replacement Lights Rebid.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? So, I want to thank our engineer for, uh, his diligence on this. This was rebid the first time. They were way too high and over budget, so, um... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifty-three is approved. Resolution number fifty-four.
Resolution number fifty-four of 2023, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an amended financial agreement between the city of Summers Point and Summers Point Preservation LP.
May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifty-four is adopted. Number fifty-five.
Resolution number fifty-five of 2023, resolution approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Summers Point and Profco Summers Point LLC for the redevelopment of Block seven nineteen lots fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifty-five is adopted. Consent agenda. Okay, we don't need to read them. Okay. Could I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Anyone have any old business to discuss? Hearing none. Uh, new business. We need, uh, approval for a social affair permit for Cornhole, New Jersey, Inc. on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four PM to eleven forty-five at E twenty-three Maze Landing Road. Anybody have any objection to this? I'm assuming all their paperwork is in order?
Yes, and, uh, the chief of police also signed off on it.
Everybody okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Cupcakes.
Yeah. That's before you go to the gym.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to, um, everybody in your packet, just something I just wanted everybody to be aware of. Uh, I was in a meeting, um, yesterday through the Chamber of Commerce. The, uh, state is proposing some, uh, reform to the liquor license laws. And so, I gave you just this sheet that gives you an overview of some of the changes they're initially proposing. And, um, just think it's something that we should just pay attention to, uh, since we do have twenty-two liquor licenses. And Summers Point, it does affect a lot of our businesses, also the brewery. So, um, I just wanted to make everybody aware of it. A representative from Economic Development, uh, Chuck Westcott, was also on the Zoom call, and I'll pay attention to it through the chamber as well, so... If anybody, um, has any questions or anything, just let me know. Okay. And no other new business to discuss? We'll move on to the bills. Jason?
Sure. So, this evening, we have, uh, two record payments, one dated January thirteenth, an amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-two cents. We have another one dated January eighteenth, an amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred. And then we have a bill list, an amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Any questions on the bills? Okay. Could I have a motion to open for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're now open for public comment.
Yes, Ed O'Donnell. Uh, there's an epidemic of mental depression worldwide, especially among young people. And there are some things we could do about it we're not talking about. Profanity, especially about human excrement, and I was glad to hear the Pope condemn that. And the current President of the United States did say four years ago on the Today Show, his greatest regret was his use of profanity. He's still doing it, but we, we have to work harder on that. Clutter. Many people's homes and offices and cars are filled with newspapers and trash. And this is not a good environment for a young person to be brought up in. There are people who's, uh, make a living, they're called clutter mitigators. You can hire them and they'll get rid of all the clutter in the house. But homes, offices, cars should be immaculately clean, beautiful, uplifting. Uh, pornography. Forty million people addicted to pornography. It does give people a bad feeling, and this has been an issue that elected officials uh, need, need to be more aggressive about. And then litter. Picking up all the litter. The world is supposed to be beautiful, and we could hire unemployed people to pick up the litter. And then one more, junior colleges, trade schools, community colleges. All the money's going to Yale, Harvard, Stanford, and Penn. Let's spread it out and make the trade school, the junior college, the community college like Harvard and Yale. And we could do one thing right now. The Ivy League schools, Yale, Patriot League, Colgate, uh, Central Athletic Association Delaware, they could schedule a lot of athletic events, not football, but with a lot of the trade schools, junior colleges, community colleges, these kids would get to travel to Ivy League schools. Beautiful, so, uh, we could do that. But there are a lot of good things happening. I was about a year ago was standing at the bus stop by the library on a Saturday morning, and the mayor drove by and picked me up, took me into Ocean City, very nice. This is government helping people. Did he charge you for that?
No.
Uh, no comment. No, he didn't. And then Jason's alma mater, St. Joseph's, just gave me a hundred free basketball tickets. We gave ninety-three out yesterday to low incomer city kids in Philadelphia in the rain and so forth. So, that was good. And then one last thing, Sean will be happy to know, St. Patrick's Day, fifty days until St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, very nice.
But I think St. Patrick only drank fruit juice. Now, Bishop Sullivan... Bishop Sullivan is an expert on St. Patrick. Bishop Sullivan's birthday is St. Patrick's Day. So, I will call him and try to get a final verdict done.
Let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Pearson, five eight seven Marks Road. There was a traffic study around today from the state, I think, and I'm not sure if it was the state. I'm pretty sure it was. Anyhow, they were all by Josie Kelly's, by, uh, the shoe store, all up and down measuring, and, uh, stayed for a couple hours, so it might be from that grant, or it might be just, uh, they were studying, I don't know. But they were around, so I thought you should know that. I also got in touch with Sean McGuigan, Councilman, for, um, the potholes that are going to be by Waterfront Marina. They're bad, real bad. And, uh, if you don't get the state right now for the next, and keep calling them every week, you're going to have a hard time in, uh, another month, but it happens every year. But somebody big in Ocean City will call the state and it'll get done. But I think you should, uh, pay attention to that. The other thing is, I'd like to see the court go to Maze Landing. I'm going to say it every week and every time until the court does go to Maze Landing. I have good reasons to tell you, but I'm not going to tell you tonight. You figure it out. I also, me and other taxpayers would like a report on what you learned at the League of Municipalities. We'd like to have some information, some information, okay? And the other thing is, before COVID, although I do think it was a couple of years before, anyhow, Summers Point has a bar and liquor association. They always did, and it always was good. So, I think you should notify your bar owners and your business owners to get that association back up again and get it running because, uh, they might need it. If, uh, they make rules that don't suit them, they could at least stand up and say what they stand for. So, you remember they had that bar and liquor association. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Gabriel, eight Gardena Drive, a Carwood Township. I have a statement, um, to the council and is the...
Did you repeat your last name again? We didn't...
Robert Gabriel.
Gabriel, oh, okay, yeah.
Is the Senator legend, uh, Ocean City, the press here from Ocean City? Well, Craig said he was going to be here, just... But, um, I want to set the record straight on that article that was written in Ocean City Center that our citizens are in agreement. So, if he, he'll listen to this afterwards. What, here's the statement. Two years ago, Mr. McGuigan stated, "On the record, he doesn't want short-term rentals in his town or street. This is his personal opinion and feelings." At that time, he called these taxpayers' homes as flop houses. He called neighbors to snitch on other neighbors if they see people they don't recognize. He also said one died in a short-term rental unit some, in some other state. People die everywhere, any, for any reason. People die everywhere, for any reason, by anybody, a stranger, family, friends, not because it was a short-term renter unit. Counsel rejected banning short-term renter units, but put in place at that time, registration, inspections, and licensing with all fees. A few months ago, we, the citizens, heard that he was added again, and now the committee is looking into it. He brought to council a petition with 19 signatures and with harsh restrictions, basically a ban on them. Many asked, 'What's the issue?' Willing to help council to work out the issues. We were told it's in committee. We have been waiting. But bit by bit, we are hearing complaints about this and that, the issues. These citizens are hard-working people, military families and moms, military moms. There's one here, serving in the 96 Air Force, fighting for your freedom, your liberty, and your life. Mr. McGuigan and some council members are now trying to find anything on them, even looking at New York policies. One councilman said that they are trying to be fair. This has nothing to do with fairness. It has to do with our constitutional rights, and we will fight and stand up for our freedom. Just like what my father did in 1944 and what her son is doing in the 96 Air Force. There will always be those that don't have any problem taking your money, your freedom, your race away, but don't mess with theirs. When millions of people didn't want police on the street, did council try to please them and be fair? No, that would be dumb. Now we hear about trash, parking, traffic, noise are the issue, as was stated in the article. Short-term rentals are the most dangerous things to hit Summers Point. At November's meeting, they recommended, you recommended high fees, raised passage fines.
Mr. Gabriel, I'm still at.
Done.
Okay, just shut, please.
I got half a page. High fines, and police would come out to the property, and they would be able to fine them $1,500 and then terminate them. His plan is to go after and pick them off one at a time. They are targeting, you are targeting citizens and punishing them. I'll skip this.
Okay.
Here's, as long as men and women are fighting for our freedom and coming back with no legs, as long as legs and arms and faces, we will fight for our freedom back here. So when they come back home, they will have their freedom, and we will not be discriminated, because we have something I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Thank you.
Hello. I have two things. First, most important.
Say your name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Gasparini, 66 Golf Mill Road, Summers Point.
Thank you.
First and foremost, my son bought a house on Dogwood. The speed limit on Laurel Drive is 25. Speed limit inside a residential neighborhood is 25. But there's a cutoff on Dogwood up to Route 9, so it ends up turning into a superhighway. For GPSs, people taking it over to Ocean City to avoid Laurel Drive and MacArthur Boulevard. My granddaughter's just under two. Is there any way that we could have a sign that says "Children at Play", or even have cops posted out there?
We can get, I'll contact the chief of police and ask them to get out there, but we can also ask Public Works to put up a sign.
Yeah, because just a couple weeks ago, right after Christmas, there was five children, looked like about eight years old, and kids were, people were flying by. You know, four little girls on roller blades.
On Dogwood or?
Dogwood. When you come off the parkway on Laurel Drive, you can jump on Dogwood.
Goes out the.
It goes right up to Route 9.
Oh, okay, off of Laurel Drive.
Yeah, and for them, the speed limit is what they want it to be, you know, which is very dangerous for all the children that are playing. Secondly, lately, people are riding scooters that go 20, 22 miles an hour, electric bikes go 25, 27 miles an hour. I would like to know, with me living in the fairways of the golf course, and my son now living on the golf course, we're three blocks apart from each other, and now they have street legal golf carts. I would like to know.
No.
No, we don't.
We don't have, we don't have street legal.
No, I'm asking, is there a possibility? What is the law against golf carts with these, even if they're electric?
We've discussed electric vehicles in the city, and it doesn't work for our city. They're not allowed on state and county roads, so you wouldn't be able to go anywhere from.
What about in residential neighborhoods?
You wouldn't be able to, you can't cross any county or state road. You wouldn't be able to.
No.
Our ordinance currently bars it.
Yeah.
And it's been looked at quite a few times. In fact, we had a councilwoman who lived down the street from me, bought a golf cart. Ended up having to sell it.
And that law, that law can never change, even with the electric bikes going at that same speed?
Electric bikes are mandated by state law. That we have no control over where electric bikes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost, you can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.